Okay, it's seven o'clock. I'll call this special meeting of the Buchanan City Council to order, especially because the regular meeting would have been on July the 4th. And we moved it to now. Ask that you join me in a moment of silence.
You've got a text message. Text messages are cool.
Thank you very much.
We respect the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to tell you a little story here for a second. Okay. I was at a funeral, and the minister had just asked for a silent prayer, and somebody's cellphone went off, and it was Janis Joplin singing, "Oh, Lord, won't you give me a Mercedes Benz?" Everybody was checking to make sure their phones were on.
Notice we have a couple of members missing seating. They have Tom Dale and John is out of town. But we do have quorum. We will proceed. Recognize our guests. We have a couple of proclamations, and I think we're gonna move up here and let Michael get out of the way for a minute.
That's the dress I could be out of.
For female women, please, if you'll come up here, circle so we can get a picture suitable for framing. It's fine. I don't think they see that anywhere. Get the thorn between the roses. I want the thorn between the roses here. This is a mayor's proclamation, West Virginia Professional Women's Week, whereas working women constitute 72 million, or almost half of the nation's workforce, and strive to serve their communities, their states, and their nation in professional, civic, and cultural capacities; and whereas women-owned businesses account for one-third of all US business in the country and provide employment for one out of every four US workers; whereas working women should be applauded for their contributions to the workplace and the financial stability of their families, especially during the economic downturn when more women have become their family's breadwinner; and whereas the major goal of professional women is to promote equality for all women and to help create better conditions for working women through the study and advocacy of social, educational, and economic issues impacting women in the workplace; and whereas since 2009, West Virginia Professional Women's Week has honored the contributions of working women and employers who support working women and their families. Now therefore, I, Kenneth T. Davidson, Mayor of the City of Buchanan, West Virginia, by authority vested in me, do hereby proclaim July 7th through 13th of 2013 as Professional, West Virginia Professional Women's Week. This event is sponsored by the West Virginia Professional Women's Club. I urge all citizens, businesses, and community organizations in Buchanan and Upsher County, West Virginia, to join this salute to working women, encourage and promote the celebration of the achievements of all working women as they contribute daily to our economic, civic, and cultural goals and livelihood. Who's the president? These are yours. One copy of each goes to those newspapers. Let's, uh... We do appreciate what you do.
Does everybody want a photo?
Look there, get a picture.
Turn properly.
Get right, right here.
And one more.
Okay. Thank you, girls.
Can you see this way so we can hear your name?
Thank you, women.
Ladies.
Girls.
That's why I didn't wear shorts tonight.
I knew there was a reason.
There was a reason. I knew I was gonna have to stand up here. One more.
You told me.
The Relay for Life.
She's just sitting there.
You saw the drill. Come on, let's go.
The presents are there.
We need one more on this side. It'll balance it out. This is another proclamation, whereas the people of Upsher County have been affected by cancer, and the mortality rate from cancer in Upsher County is higher than national averages. And whereas the American Cancer Society is celebrating its 100th anniversary this year, and Relay for Life is a signature activity of the American Cancer Society; and whereas Relay for Life of Upsher County is not just a fundraiser, it is a unique activity that offers an opportunity to participate in the fight against cancer, to honor cancer survivors, and remember those lost to the disease, to build a network of businesses and health organizations to address community cancer issues, and to recruit new volunteers to deliver American Cancer Society programs and services. And whereas Relay for Life of Upsher County has had a significant presence in our community for the last 15 years, has touched thousands of residents, and has raised over $1.5 million to help fight the battle against cancer. Now therefore, be it resolved that we, the City Council of Buchanan, do hereby proclaim the month of July in the year 2013 as Relay for Life Month in Buchanan, and urge individuals, families, businesses, schools, service organizations, churches, and neighbors to unite in the fight against cancer, to honor cancer survivors, and to remember those who have lost cancer. I would say I have two sisters who are survivors, and my father passed away with cancer. So, uh, who's the... So let's tuck it in here a little bit, so we can get a good picture.
And one more.
Okay, that brings us to Department of Labor and Reports. Michael Doss, City Commissioner.
You do have in front of you, for consideration, Resolution 213-08. This is our coal tax resolution. As you know, or may not know, every year, at the beginning of the fiscal year, there's certain things that need to be submitted to the auditor, and they have a timeline, deadline. One of those is coal tax. What we do with coal tax is, of course, we budget our coal tax when we do our budget appropriations in March, but we have to provide the state auditors with an actual fund balance at the end of the fiscal year and do a revision. So what you have in front of you is the revision for your consideration. As a note, our fund balance ending for coal tax was $51,332, and that's been added to our budget revision. I will also make note that by law, coal tax money can only be used for specific things, such as street improvements, road improvements, ridge improvements, which we don't have here. And I will note that we've actually been accumulating that fund for a few years, and we will be actually using that fund. We can only keep it for so long. We'll actually be using that to assist us with some of our paving that we're doing on Pocahontas at Bay. So, um, don't get used to that number. And we'll also note that our expectation, and we did budget it for this year, as far as revenues are concerned, our expectation is coal tax, our coal severance, will actually go down because of the coal industry in West Virginia is going down. So, without any more political statements, so your consideration asks a individual vote on Resolution 213-08.
Motion to approve Resolution 213-08.
I move we approve Resolution 213-08.
And second. Any discussion requires roll call. Bridge.
Pam?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
Dave Thomas?
Yes.
Myself?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Next item under my report, and I apologize, I don't have that much to talk about, but the item I do have to talk about, probably take a little bit of discussion. We are closing out the 2012-13 fiscal year, and it already is, as you know, the 2013-14 fiscal year. And again, part of our obligation to the state auditors required by law is that we actually present them with a general fund balance ending June 30th of the previous fiscal year. That will be up for consideration at the next council meeting. It has to be turned in by the end of the month. But before that time, we need to look at some things and make some decisions on where we're gonna go with our budget. I know that Mr. Thomas had talked about looking at the possibility of paying off some debt early, and that'll be part of the conversation tonight as well. But I do want to advise you that in March, we estimated, or I estimated, that our fund balance would be $525,514. I estimate that low. And we budget accordingly with that, with all of our other revenues. We ended this year, this fiscal year, with a fund balance of $615,955, which is a difference of $90,441. I also want to note that that does not include a CD that we have out there for $81,477.37. That's a CD that we have out. There are a few obligations and things of note as we're looking at a budget revision for the next council meeting. The first thing is, within our budget, we have appropriated funds and receipts for our Main Street or Gateway East project. We really did not do any of that project in the last fiscal year, so in essence, we need to budget accordingly. We were expecting that we would have some of that done by the end of this fiscal year. We did not do anything. There's been some holes, which Jay will probably allude to in his report. But gosh, we hope we can get this finished this fiscal year, because we'll have this project season and a little bit of next project season. But with all of that being said, it's still an 80-20 grant, 80% received, 20% expenditures on the city's part, city's obligation. That total project, what I'm looking at is $273,526.40. That includes materials and reimbursement for our street labor, and again, an 80-20 match. So with that project not being started in the last fiscal year, we essentially have to absorb all of that project in this fiscal year. With that being said, we did budget, again, anticipating that some of that project would be finished. We did budget $100,000 that we've received in reimbursements for the Main Street project. Obviously, it's not having that project finished, and hopefully finished in this fiscal year. We're now anticipating that we will bring in revenue to reimburse that, again, at 80% of $219,335, which is an additional revenue increase, if you will, of $119,335. If you add that $119,335, with the $90,441, you get a grand total of $209,776. You with me so far?
Yeah, yeah, follow.
Sorry. Dave, I knows what. So that's additional revenue.
He's correcting your math.
That's a... No, I need to on this one. That's additional revenues that we have that, of course, some of that will show in our Main Street expenditures that I'll mention later on. We also have some what I call obligations that need to be considered before we can get to the ultimate decision, which will be what will we do with the remaining fund balance that we have available. Region 7 dues actually went up $1,410. So out of that $209,776, we need to budget an additional $1,410 to make up that difference. So there's a little bit of that money being cut into. Another item is we receive funds, the police receive funds from the Central West Virginia FOP, and actually some money from an individual for vest donations. They wrote a personal check for vest donations. Those monies are to be used by the police, in particular, the Central West Virginia FOP, to assist with children's programs and some of the outreach that they do. So those are what I would also call committed dollars. I'm going to recommend putting that in our police maintenance supply line, which was originally budgeted at $22,000, which will bring that up to about $25,500, which is a difference of an increase of $3,500. Again, those monies have been collected last fiscal year, are part of that fund balance. So again, we're reducing that from the $209,776. Trust me, this is dry, but worth it. Main Street, as mentioned earlier, we figured that we would have half of that project finished, but we don't. So we're going to have to increase our expenditure line in that. We'd originally budgeted $75,000, with council approving the additional match for the additional monies of $11,400, on top of what we had originally requested in our match and what I presented last council meeting and council had approved. We'll actually take our budget from $75,000 to $156,000, which is an expenditure increase of $81,000. Stockard Basketball is a line item. Stockard collects money for their Boys and Girls Basketball to go on trips and travel for their tournaments. So individuals have handwritten checks out as donations to go for Stockard Basketball. Again, another committed dollar that needs to come out of that that was collected in our fund balance. Originally, we had budgeted for basketball $10,000. Adding that amount of $4,500, they collected $4,500 in checks for Boys and Girls Basketball for tournaments and travel. That will actually increase that budget to $14,500, again, cutting into that. The total amounts for all of these committed dollars, if you will, is $90,410. $90,410. And if you subtract that from our additional revenue that we're bringing in, that brings you a grand total of $119,366, aside from the $81,477.37 we have in our CD. Now with that said, I'd rather not touch the CD, and I'll just kind of leave that discussion for later on. So essentially, what I'm bringing to you is $119,366. Any questions so far?
I've like it on unmarked bills.
Can't do that. So with that said, we'll bring to the conversation a couple of items of importance. There was discussion several months ago, when we were talking about our rainy day fund, of where to put those monies. Should we commit them to Rainy Day, or should we not? And there was discussion of actually taking that money through a concept of net present value and actually paying off some debt in the long run. I anticipated that you would actually, you would actually bring in more revenue, wouldn't expend as much paying those debts off early, would actually save money. I looked at that, and I promised Mr. Thomas I would look at that again, so here we are. Again, keeping in mind that we have $119,366, aside from our CD. We have a 2010 Cruiser, a fire truck, and a backhoe that will all be paid off the end of this month. So if you will, I would rather not have those as part of the discussion, because those are gonna get paid off their final payment. So essentially, what we're looking at are three 2011 police cruisers, a snowplow, three 2013 cruisers we just purchased, and a street sweeper. Our other debts are the Public Safety Complex and the National Guard Armory Conference Center, which are pretty significant debts, probably not part of this conversation. I think the optimism was to look at some of our higher interest rate payments on some of these, and try to consider paying off that debt. The Ford Motor, three 2011 cruisers have a current balance of $27,696.86, at a rate of 5.2% interest. It's a higher interest rate loan. That is scheduled to pay off September 10th of 2014. We currently make a yearly payment of $14,900. Now that money has been included in Matt's equipment outlay as part of the payment. So in order to pay off that balance, we would need to appropriate an additional $12,797, which again, would take that total down, that $119,366, down to $106,569. Okay? Everybody with me? That would actually save the city of Buchanan $2,178.58 over that period of time. One other thing, and I want to throw this as kind of a fly on the ointment, is we have some issues with the Public Safety Building and the completion of the Public Safety Building. We currently budgeted $135,000 in the Public Safety Building to complete the necessary items within that building to get that functional and operational for our policedome event. The goal of that anticipation, that the street department labor would be utilized for the carpentry work and finishing work to get that complete, the $135 covered materials. I know that council's been approached, and there's been discussion in the community about when we're going to get that building finished. Quite honestly, if we have our street department do it, and we have a pretty good winter, meaning that we're really not that busy plowing snow, theoretically, we could probably have that building completed by this time next year. If we want to contract that work out at prevailing wage, which we would have to pay prevailing wage, what, Jay, we're talking about, what, $70,000, $80,000?
Yeah, a total of $235,000 to $240,000.
Okay, with the $135,000 plus the prevailing wage. So with that said, I think that needs to be part of the discussion. It would be our anticipation that we could go and bid that work out, do our advertising. You say it'd take a couple of months to get all that, and then hopefully, they could conceivably be finished by the end of the year. Fingers crossed?
No, I mean, with the timeframe that it is now, you're gonna need a minimum of a month to pull together what's gonna be performed by the various contractors. Say a month to say, you know, what type paint, what type of floor tile. Two weeks to advertise, two weeks to accept bids. You're already at two months. You're at the end of August. You're looking at the beginning of September. It's nice winter work, but to say that we would be in by the end of the year, that's pretty aggressive. I'm looking more towards February now, because I mean, we've tossed this around since April, and we're just now bringing it to the topic. And so those three and four months that were lost, I would just add to the end of it. It would be, it would assure that it would be finished if we went to contractors, because they can, they would be dedicated to the job. Whereas Jerry and the street department, it just depends on weather and upcoming projects and what else is going on. I guess it really is up to the council, you know, how quick do you want to put the police department in the public safety complex?
And Jay had mentioned the discussions in April, and the fact that we weren't sure where our fund balance would be. And now's the time to make those decisions. And those decisions do not have to necessarily be made today, but they have to be made between today and the next council meeting. So it may be of interest for council, and maybe consider a work session to discuss this if no resolution could be met tonight. If you do go that route, you're talking about $80,000 more. Obviously, that $80,000 out of that $106,569, if you pay off one of the debts, would not leave you with much at either point, any of the remaining balance, if we don't go the route of the Public Safety and have Jerry's crew do it, or we go the route of the prevailing wage and we pay off debt. However, I would recommend that any of those monies left go into Council Capital Outlet for council's consideration in the future on whatever projects or whatever may arise in the next 363 days.
So you're saying we would have a balance of about $26,000 in there. Is that correct?
That sounds roughly right, Ron. If we put the $80,000...
The $80,000 in the Public Safety?
Yeah, it'd actually be $26,569 that I would recommend going to Council Capital Outlet. Again, I do have to note that you have the CD out there for $81,477, but we have two members of the Water Board, and you know the reason why we try to keep those CDs, and what we had to do with that CD, and I'd rather not touch that. But I do have to make a note of that for record, because that is considered part of our cash we could liquefy.
Let me make a couple of comments, Michael. One is that I know we've had some discussion about part-time and so forth. It was announced today in headline news that they're postponing Obamacare for one year, which gives employers more flexibility than what we had anticipated. So I think that's something that, you know, you can look at starting tomorrow, that what are the ramifications of that? And what is our current balance in the, for lack of a better word, the rainy day fund as of the end of this fiscal year?
$500,204 and some change.
And where are those monies invested?
They're just in the money market account.
So gaining very little interest. Yeah, you do have access to that also. You know, we discussed several times that, I'm not suggesting that we pay off all the indebtedness that we have, especially the National Guard and the Public Safety Complex. But a couple of months ago, you had mentioned our debt was from three and three-quarters up to six and a quarter. And I would advocate that certainly the six and a quarter and the 5.2% makes sense to me if you have money sitting in the money market or wherever to go ahead and pay this off, because at the end of the year, that would be replenished anyway.
Dave, I want to make one note real quick. The six and a quarter is actually on a 2004 Cruiser that is getting paid off at the end of this month. It's one of those.
Okay.
The ones you're looking at, again, are the three 2011 cruisers. The balance on that is $27,696.86, which is the one I mentioned. Snowplow at $31,948.70. The three most recent cruisers, the 13 models that we bought, is $56,809.85. And then the street sweeper is at $98,555. And then you have the Public Safety Building and the Conference Center.
So you feel comfortable with using a portion of this to pay off some early debt that would save us money in the long run? But it seems to me that the biggest discussion we have is the Public Safety Complex, whether we want to contract out or use our current employees to finish that up next season.
As Ron mentioned, Dave, if we go that route, we add $80,000, we take that $80,000 out of our available fund balance, which leaves us $26,000, and that includes paying off that one Cruiser, just shot $28,000. We talked about, with $26,000, you could, I don't think you could pay off anything else. You could get your snowplow pretty close. Cruisers, you'd probably get half of that paid, you know, if you did that. But $26,000 wouldn't cover any other debt of paying that fully off.
Well, what's your recommendation in regard to in-house versus contracting out for the Public Safety Complex, to be honest? If we can save, if we can wait one more year and save significant monies, well, I mean...
Maybe we should do that. From a financial standpoint, I'm all for saving money. But from a personnel standpoint, I mean, it is gonna put a stress burden on Jerry, and then I think that comes down to council decision of, you know, the public, I know, has been contacting some of you about when that's gonna get finished. And, you know, that could now be July of next year. So, you know, I'm all for saving money, but I don't know, I don't know what the winter's gonna bring, you know, with Jerry's crew. I'm very confident in Jerry's crew, but I really don't know. I mean, Jay's now saying February, so March, April, May, June, you know, that saves you about four months. I don't, that's best case.
Best case.
So...
On the other hand, one thing you haven't mentioned is that if Jerry's crew is not doing it, it's not that they're not doing anything. It's just that there's lots of projects. I know the need to be done, and they could be done in the winter as well. It's a matter of being able to schedule a crew in there that just stays there day in and day out, and knows at the end of Monday what they have to do Tuesday morning, where Jerry's crew is in there for maybe a week, and then gone for a week and back. And, you know, it's very difficult to schedule those kinds of activities.
I guess, adding the Public Safety to the conversation, I would rather have one or the other. I'd rather have the Public Safety Building and not pay off that debt, or pay off that debt and not do the Public Safety Building, to be honest with you.
Well, I guess the question, the question I have, is that if you've got $500-some-thousand in money market on the rainy day fund, you could do both. And when you look at prevailing wages, they're substantially more than what our employees are making on an hourly basis. But we also have to understand that when we look at our hourly employees, that if you factor in the total compensation per hour, you have to add, you know, workers' comp, health insurance, pension plans, and so forth. So you can't just compare the hourly rate with the prevailing wage. You have to look at the total rate. But I think with $500-some-thousand that if you have some 5.2%, that makes more sense to pay that off early than having it sit in the money market. I mean, you know, maybe you need to come back specifically with a recommendation next council meeting to say, this is how much we think we should pay off, and this is what we need to do as far as the Public Safety Complex.
Well, I think that's what he's done. He's making a recommendation. But we had this conversation... But we had this conversation about the process for completing the public safety complex a year ago, two years ago, and was, council at that time said, let's save the money and let's keep moving ahead with our own labor. And if you feel differently about that now, that's fine. But we've been operating on the decision that council made, that we would move as we could. And Jerry wears an awful lot of hats, and he, sometimes they don't fit too well. But it is difficult to schedule. The police department is surviving in the basement. It's not the best, we understand. That's why we're doing this. But eighty thousand dollars is money that could be appropriated elsewhere.
Let me throw this in, if I may. You do have the CD.
Yeah.
You have the CD, which should cover prevailing wage, although we'll caution you that that could, that's, you won't be able to liquidate that and anything else. And we sometimes have the luxury of adding that into our fund balance. For whatever reason, there's something that, an expenditure that pops up that wasn't anticipated, you know, over the course of this year, we may not be able to get that eighty-one thousand back in there. You know, that's a little bit of an uncertainty, but that is there. And that essentially could curb this issue of getting that public safety building if we liquidate that out. But again, I would probably caution at that point, taking that one hundred and nineteen thousand three sixty-six and keeping that in council capital outlet. That would be something that only council would touch.
If we had five hundred thousand in the rainy day fund, is there any way we can put that into other investments that could draw more than point oh, point, point, point three percent or whatever it is?
Well, unfortunately, we're limited, because we, our money is taxpayers' dollars on the investments and the things that we do deal with it. We're very limited in market, just to be honest.
I'll make a recommendation.
Go ahead.
I recommend that, as the mayor has indicated, we proceed with what we've decided in the past to recognizing that our employees are qualified to finalize a public safety complex within a certain timeframe, and it may not be, you know, what we want, but let's save that money while utilizing them, and hopefully we have a kind of winter where they can get in there and do the work. And I suggest that, in addition, I mean, I think they're separate issues, quite frankly, but the, that we also take a look at the higher debt, which you've indicated is five point two percent. At least pay some of that off early, which is going to save us money over the next twelve months. And, you know, I think those are both things that can be achieved.
So Dave, you're saying you use street labor then?
Yeah.
Well, in that case, I revert back to...
Keep the course that we've gone.
I revert back to some scenario is we can pay off that item and leave ourself with one hundred and six five sixty-nine.
Then we can put it in the capital outlet, capital, capital.
And let me say this, though. I mean, we can, that'll stay in, it's almost like a contingency fund, if you will. That's in there.
But I...
That can be utilized for in-car cameras. I know we're a couple officers down. There's things that we can do, it's just this shy in the year, I'm just, you know, I'm just conservative on this. I'm a little gun shy, just because we ended one fiscal year and another, but that's just...
I hate to spend all the money the first day.
Yeah, I don't want to. I want to ask Mitch a question here. When you did the fire station, how much of the work was done by the volunteer firemen over there?
Quite a bit, a lot of it, a lot of it.
And we don't have that luxury with the police department. We don't have any volunteer policemen.
I, I'm thinking that, I don't know, eighty thousand bucks versus the morale of our police department being stuck in the basement here, which, you know, you say it's nice, but it's still the basement, and looking at the public safety complex as designed for that, and I've been saying for several years that they're going to be in this complex, well, hopefully next year, no, it's going to be next year, no, it's going to be next year. I'm almost inclined to say to spend the eighty grand, get them in the complex just as soon as possible, and to help their morale out, because we certainly aren't giving them a lot of anything else.
But you're looking at a differential of maybe just four or five months. That's what Jay's saying. That even if you contract out, you're probably not going to get it done.
Dave, we can't depend on that. That's just, that's just a guess to make, you know, weekly.
Yeah, that's a swag, right?
You know, it's, it could be another year and a half instead of four or five months difference here.
Jay's been just about to bite his finger off.
I just wanted to pass this along as you're all discussing this, and thank you that you all didn't make the motion yet. Where we're getting to in this stage does not include, as we've talked about, the completion of the training center, you know, inside the public safety complex, or the debriefing room. Those are the two things that had a high dollar finishes as far as the molding, the chair rails and the columns and all that. But that does not include any work in those two areas. The drywall and the materials have been paid for and acquired that. The plumbing, sprinkler system and HVAC work have been run into those rooms, but they are not in the finished product as we're talking about a public safety complex.
I will keep in mind that this will be a functional police department. It's just the briefing room and the conference training room would not be complete, and are not actually necessary for the police to operate. Our anticipation was while we were collecting funds and planning that for phase two, if you will, hopefully by that time the Brushy Fork Conference Center would be built. And certainly, as part of our agreement and understanding with the Commission of Visitors' Bureau, we can use that from time to time. We can have trainings and house trainings. And I think that's part of the community purpose as to why we have that building. So that can operate as a temporary thing for the police, and Chief Gregory is on board with that. He understands that.
When you're doing your analysis, saying it's going to cost eighty thousand dollars more, that's simply looking at the differentiation between the prevailing hourly rate and what our hourly rates are for employees.
Yes.
So we don't factor in for our employees, the...
The costs associated.
Health insurance and pension plan and so forth. So in reality, it's probably not eighty thousand dollar difference if you add, you know, what our hourly costs are for health insurance and pension plan and all the other fringe benefits. So it's really not, we're not going to save eighty thousand dollars, we'll be much less than that. So from that perspective, I think, you know, maybe we should go ahead and subcontract out. But I also think with the five hundred and some thousand dollars sitting in a rainy day fund, we would have paid a little bit of that debt off early to save money if we can. I mean, that makes sense to me. I think they're two separate issues.
Yeah, I don't, I still contend we need to leave that rainy day fund alone. That's, we bit the bullet to put that money in that rainy day fund, and we had very little. We, the council, were concerned over that for a number of years, and with Michael's coming, we've gotten that worked out, and we have that there. And I don't know whether I feel safe with that much money in reserve or not. And I've said to all of you, Dave, I know you're an accountant, I know Ridge is, and you know more about this than I do, but I don't feel good about reducing that rainy day fund.
Well, I'm not an accountant, but I'm a person that, I think I know a little bit about finance, in that if you take a look at your timeline between July one this year and July one next year, that by paying off some of your indebtedness, that it's a high rate versus what you get in the money market, I'm not suggesting we deplete the fund by any enormous amount, but if you can save five or ten thousand dollars and you have a twelve-month timeframe, that makes sense to me financially. To me, it's a no-brainer, quite frankly.
Here's a thought, just...
I mean, I'm frustrated with the net present value analysis, which to me is just, you know, slammed up in a sense, so... But Kenny's right from the standpoint, we don't want to deplete the rainy day fund. But at the same time, I think if you do prudently, you'll have more a year from now in the rainy day fund than you would have if you don't do this. I mean, I don't know how to state it any simpler than that.
Mitch, you've been...
I wanted to follow up what Jay said and to kind of follow up with Mike, too, about the conference room. The conference room at the public safety complex, somewhere along the line, got termed from a training room in the conference there. That room was originally intended in the public safety building to be a training room for the fire department, the police department, and any other city departments that needed that, like the water department, street department need to have a safety room. So let's not lose focus of that. That room was never intended to be a conference room. So I don't want to see that thing get shoved away and say we moved out to Brushy Fork, because when we originally did the trade and the foreplan of that building, we sacrificed that knowing that that would come at a later phase. So I don't want to see, I don't want to see you talk about going to Brushy Fork and forget about our training room, of course. Still, the fire department, we don't have a suitable room that's conducive to training, because we're doing a lot of online training and everything now is through the internet. We don't have any place where our guys can sit down at the desk and have a suitable training. So I don't want, I mean, I'm not being the devil's advocate, but I don't want to see you lose sight of that. Let's not confuse the conference center at the National Guard Army with the training room, the fire department and police department still need to operate.
And I think with the coming of the conference center, we can fancy down that plan a little bit.
There's none, Jay and I have all three talked about this, we're firemen, we don't need pillars and crown molding. We've got guys who are going to become interpolated with mud on their boots. So we can scale that down. If it's just got something that's suitable where we can hear when we talk and hear audio, that's all we need. We don't need collars and... Collars are going to be in our way to begin with. We don't need that, we don't want that fancy stuff.
Well, the collars are in.
You know, I mean, they're...
They'll make good wire chases, right?
Perfect chases. But you're exact, we could scale way, way down, but I don't want, I don't want to see you lose focus of that, because it still has to be...
Like I said, that I was going to.
Jay, when the conference... When the whole complex was originally designed, I realize you weren't on staff at the time, but do you have any idea when the original completion date was scheduled?
I can look back. I mean, I honestly can say I don't know, and I don't know if one was set. I know when I came on board, that, you know, as the mayor alluded to earlier, numerous times that it was as we get the funds, but as far as a hard date, no. You know, I can look, but I don't think there's anything in there.
Probably two years ago.
Yeah, it seems the mayor was two years ago. That's what bothers me a little bit, is that there is a cost in not having the right kinds of facilities, and if anybody'd like a tour of the police department, those folks deal in an area that's not suitable, conduct business, period. And I've toured the new facilities, and even with the no moldings around the doors and no doors and everything else, it's a lot better than what they got downstairs.
It's, they're crawling all over each other. I mean, it's...
Well, I think maybe an analysis of what Dave was talking about is, we don't consider in our costs what we pay the street department people to do the work, because they're already being paid. But there's work that they could be doing, so let's do for next meeting an analysis of what we, if we considered what we were paying to get the work, what we are currently paying to get it done, versus what we would pay a contractor to do it, and let's look at that number. Understand what I'm saying?
Given that you've got a budget adjustment...
Probably going to need a work session, unless it's something that we can revise after we revise in, what, August? And if we go prevailing wage, we need to get those in.
They don't change from January one, or the first date...
The advertisements and all that.
You know, but I mean, you're looking at a month advertising and bidding, minimum, because you're over a limit. And then to pull all that together, what we've talked about here tonight, to pull a scope of work together, who's going to be responsible for what tasks with the city, of course, like they've always done, purchasing the material, the contractor just providing the labor, you know, we've got to come together and decide what that scope's going to be. Is a month enough? That seems very tight. And, you know, with, the next thing we're going to be talking about, the water treatment plan and the engineers, I mean, I don't know, and the guard and border age, and I just don't know how much time I could just truly devote to that one project as far as putting together a scope of services. But, I mean, that, you all said it, Jerry, I think, that's very aggressive and very optimistic as far as, you know, February date if we contract it out, but it's something I believe that needs to be discussed.
Again, I'll throw out, you have the CD. If you want to liquefy the CD, but I will caution, I don't know where that fund balance is going to be a year from now. And the thing about that fund balance is that that's actually spoken for money in a sense, is what keeps us going for the first quarter of the new fiscal year as we make payments and expenditures until we get our, what would that be, our third quarter BNO tax, and then we ultimately get our ad lorum tax, our first wave of that for the fiscal year in September. That does become part of our overall budgeting, so if that's short, then we have to cut somewhere in expenditures.
Let me just ask a practical question from governmental accounting, because I'm not familiar with this stuff, you know, as much as it used to be years ago. But the, I mean, if you're paying so much per month, let's say X amount of dollars per month for the, for your debt service, that's a five point two percent or whatever it is, per month, and you pay them off early, can you not then utilize in your budget the cash flow that you're saving to simply replenish your rainy day fund on a monthly basis?
You mean for the next fiscal year?
During this current fiscal year. I mean, just, you know, you're paying off XYZ debt, so you're saving XYZ money, and then you just keep replenishing your rainy day fund to do that. I mean, the money market's sitting there getting nothing. It just doesn't make any sense to me. So I just ask you to do that analysis for the next meeting, and, you know, we can deal with both issues.
What, Jerry, what's the possibility? I've never asked this question. What's the possibility that some of your people would want to work some overtime during the winter or fall or whatever, Saturdays or whatnot, if we would pay some of those guys overtime? That'd be cheaper than prevailing wage.
I can ask, but remember, they are on call through the winter.
Yeah, sure, understand.
So, you know, I'm sure that there would be some take, the mayor, but to make a significant difference in the bottom line, I don't know that it would. Because again, the biggest thing that kills us is, first of all, levelizing everything to the site that you need, tool-wise. Then getting started, you know, in your own projects, that if you get started and then someone calls you and stops you, and then you have to go back and start over again. It takes twice as long, it seems like, to complete that task, and that's the same way that we are. We get started into that, and the next day we have to go out and put up a stop sign or have to go out and plow streets, and we get pulled out of that, they get all focused, and you have to go back in and concentrate your efforts again on that same task. It seems to take twice as long as well as if we could go in there and devote a month to the public safety complex. So I think you would see very close to completion in that timeframe, but we just don't have the luxury with the other expectations that are on the street department and their routine maintenance.
Well, I heard what you said, Ron, and the city attorney, I think, can address that. We have some, because we are a municipality, we have restrictions on what we can and can't do in regard to specifically hiring somebody ourselves to do a job, Dave, is that correct?
That's correct, Mr. Thomas. There are state and federal statutes that prohibit local governments from hiring temporary full-time employees. Now, if your long-range plan was that, gee, we're two or three employees down, or we really need to be with the street department, we're going to hire people for the long haul, that's different, and they're not temporary. But you cannot, as an entity, basically circumvent what either the affiliated trade council is watching, there's a watchdog group that represents organized labor about these things. And on the other side, while they're normally a hundred and eighty degrees away from the organized labor side, there's a contractors association that also is looking for opportunities to bid the kind of project like you're talking about here tonight. So there are both, again, state and federal statutes that, I wouldn't say manacle cities, there are many exceptions, that we use seasonal employees are different from those things. People that mow lawn and shovel snow, those kinds of things are different from what I'm talking about, that you have to be careful with them.
I just wanted you to point that out, because if you're looking at us from... I, I just wanted you to point that out because if you're looking at us from on the TV or on the newspaper, you know, we, we, it seems like it could be an easy problem solved, but it's not that easy sometimes.
That's correct. Very correct.
And if you, I think there are some cases that I've heard you talk about that where government entity had employed people for a particular project in a deliberate attempt to circumvent the Davis Bacon Act.
Yes, sir.
And the consequences of that action are not anything we want to deal with.
The phrase punitive damages is one I hope we can stay away from.
It's trouble.
I'm not going to get involved in it.
I would just like to get a.
Go ahead.
Jerry, we didn't have a bad winter last year. Did you guys work in there last year?
Drywall bad last year.
They got a lot of work.
If you'll notice, there's holes in the foundation in City Hall that are still there because we're on projects. These sightings off the street garage on the end because we're on other projects. And to move that ahead, I'm all for, and you all know I'm all for trying to utilize our people and save money. We've done it in the past, we've done it repetitively. But what I'm saying is the demand on street department labor right now, even on, last year we poured concrete through the winter, you might as well say on sidewalk to complete the project. That's all I'm saying. To say that we will use a street labor, we'll be done by July, I wouldn't make that, I wouldn't make that commitment at all to you.
What I'd like to see is see whatever can be done and gets done this winter and maybe visit this again in March. And like Jay said, it's going to take a couple of months, you know, advertising and everything. I'd like to get this started to be completed by this time next year.
I'd like not to wait through the winter. I'd like to start on it right now and get it going because we've talked about waiting, next year we'll talk about waiting, year after that we'll talk about waiting. I think we ought to do something. We've got the money right there right now, we ought to go through it and get this project done and spend three or four years and promising people it would be, get done. I think it's time we take some action instead of just talking about it. I think we ought to spend the 80 grand extra and get this thing going.
Well, I don't think it's even a cost, this additional 80,000, if you do, if you do the analysis in regard to the healthcare and the pension plan. I, I would guess I would ask Michael to do a specific recommendation next council meeting. That's what, 14, 16 days from today?
Eighteen days.
And the, you know, what do you recommend as treasurer of the city in respect to completion of the public safety complex, how we do it? And I, I think I know what you'll recommend. And then also, do we have the capability of paying off some of the high debt? I mean, relatively high debt, it's, it's 5.2% versus half a percent in a money market account. Understanding that that money is going to be punished immediately each month, so we're actually going to have, you know, the same amount, actually more, a year from now, so.
Again, I want to reiterate, state law, not me, that we have to have a revision in at the next council meeting. So if I make a recommendation or recommendations that do not go with this council, we'll have to have a special meeting of council.
I think, I think we need a work session.
I mean, it's state law, not me, you know, dictating this portion.
I think we need to have a work session. What fits y'all's fancy next week?
Let me also, before you get too quick on certain dates, we're, we're going to need a, about two and a half hours of interviews for police department candidates, so. Do that the same night or a different night? You got two open to schedule.
I don't know. You guys do the interviews, but I'd rather just do it all in one night because it'd be a very long night.
I'd rather do it all in one night, too. Could do it on a Saturday morning.
Later.
Could do it on a Saturday morning.
Yeah, I can't make it, she's working Saturday.
I can make plans.
One of them working girls.
Right there. I don't mind meeting on a Saturday morning either, so. You supply the coffee and donuts, I'll be.
Pick another room you did.
What I, we need, this is a decision we need to make tonight. When will we meet to do the interviews? That must be down the line here or someplace.
Is it right?
And under Rich's report, let's pause, go to Rich. What's the situation there, Rich?
Well, we have two positions open, and we had five successful candidates from the most recent testing. The scores are such that when you rank them, there's a first position, a second, and three people tied for third. So recommendation is from police civil service that you interview all five candidates, select one to be your, one of the hires, and then consider what's left for the second hire. You're going to have to, you know, roughly half hour for each one, so.
Did I interview five? Can we pick two?
Yes, Mayor, given the test score, this odd situation, years ago, there was one situation where there were four folks interviewed because third place died. In this situation, it happens to be that the number three has three of the same score.
All of the scores are within.
Two or three points.
Yeah, three or four points of each other.
Did we advertise for the second position already? Was that done?
We advertised for probationary officers. We didn't say how many, if any, percent were.
So we, we could select two from this group of five.
That is correct, Mayor.
So we should, we should set a date for that, for the interviews now. Do we have a timeline?
The chief would like to have these done, I believe, if I remember, is the date is July 24th is the date they have to have all their paperwork. He's already got two slots being held in the, in the training.
For the academy.
Early August for the academy.
So he needs his names by deadline 24th.
Yeah, or obviously sooner if they.
Right, sooner.
Yeah.
I think the next session of the academy's not until like next March or April.
Yeah, missed this one.
You missed this one, you're not, you're not going to have anybody else.
And our next council meeting is the 18th of July.
And that's, by 18th, we've got to have a decision made about what we're going to do with the money.
So we should have a meeting, we should have a meeting next week.
So we need a special meeting, and we just killed two birds with one stone. You're talking two and a half hours for the interviews and.
Probably an hour.
And then pizza and.
Monday evening.
Can't keep my light on here.
That's the eighth.
Monday the eighth. That's the only evening I don't have anything on.
Monday the eighth. What time you want to start?
Six o'clock.
Six, five?
Monday the eighth.
I don't work on Mondays at night.
We could start at five for the work session and then start the interviews.
Start at four for the work session.
Yeah. You going to buy pizza or?
Sure, I'll buy you pizza.
I'll, I'll split it with.
Okay, four o'clock Monday, what, the eighth? Done. Four o'clock Monday the eighth, and we're going to kill two birds with one stone.
I even like Angela.
And do we need any more, we don't need more discussion on the police thing, but what about, what about these finances? Do we need to, do we need to spend any more time on that?
I think that could be part of the work session next.
Work session, we're going to, we're going to try to resolve this issue on Monday.
I will say that the overall debt, aside from the public safety building and Brushy Fork totals $215,000.1041. If all of that was paid off over a period of a few years, it would save $19,616.74.
And I had the assumption that the four o'clock meeting would be open to the public and the interviews would be executive session?
Are we, so we're going to start the interviews at six?
Well, whenever, but, yeah, we can start them at six.
Start at six, and that will, that will give us two hours. If we get done early, we can go get some pizza or, we can go across the street and have something else, but.
They probably owe us something anyway, don't they?
One would think, right?
Put it on Dawson's.
He's got a tab, Bear.
He does?
Has to.
No, I don't have a tab.
He's got an officer.
You're like, you're like the IRS, huh?
Okay, let's move ahead.
That's all I have, Mayor, to me.
Thank you. Mitch?
I'll try not to be as windy as Michael. Just a couple of things. The county's purchased a program to, us to call, to texting. We're still trying to work some bugs out of that. We've gone, like anything, with new technology, it wasn't as easy as it sounded, so they're still working on that. We have two college students that are westman that are living with us this summer, two. One is there as an intern with the police department, he's there throughout the day, and another boy's working locally, spending his evenings there. Starting this fall, these two may move out, but starting this fall, we have another college student who is also a volunteer who's going to be living with us in our living program at the fire station, so that kind of helps us out. And last month or so, as I told you, we have a new squad truck coming and we've been purchasing some equipment. In fact, we've got about over $9,000 in equipment, and that's bought us some air packs, a radio and a Sol. That's kind of what we got, $9,000, so. And just remind our citizens that we're having our fall bash in October, and we will be having our last early bird drawing for $500 cash. That drawing will be held on July 4th, so it's, we're selling, we're raffling off guns, we'll have some electronic equipment. Our grand prize is a Suzuki ATV, but the big thing going on now is July 4th, we'll be having an early bird drawing for $500. So if anybody hasn't got their tickets, they want to do so now to take advantage of the chance to win $500.
And when's the, and when's the other drawing for the other things that you have?
It's in October, David, and my goodness, the date, I'm thinking the 7th.
How much do the tickets cost?
Tickets are $30 apiece. And that gets you a chance to win the $500 early bird drawing for July 4th, and a chance to win the grand prize, plus that allows you to meal all the prizes that we get.
And you have a lot of stuff that's.
Yes, yes, we do. We had one last year that went, this will be our second or third one, so.
Give me, before, before you leave, I'll buy it.
Okay.
So if you win the $500, does your ticket go back to you?
Yes, it does. Absolutely.
You think you're going to win? You got tickets, you got tickets on you now?
Yes, I do. That's the amount of credit.
Prices by any elected official are $25.
And that's all I have. One thing that we, I told you, we do have a new squad vehicle order in here, month into next month. And also, we had a carryall that we use to transport people when we have an old pickup. We're selling our personnel carrier and our pickup, we're going to eliminate two pieces of equipment and go along. We're getting enough out of there to buy us a, the pickup that we're wanting, so it's going to kind of be an even trade. We're kind of down to get rid of two to get along, so. That's all I have. Any questions?
Questions for Mitch?
No, Mitch, I thought about you getting a fireman this week with the Arizona firemen out there being.
Yeah, I'd like to mention that. Just like to ask members of council, citizens, just keep those families in your prayers. That's very devastating, those 19 firefighters. Those guys lost about 20% of their fire department. That's a devastating opportunity to families, so.
What do they have, wind shift?
It looks, Dave, with like all indication, they just got a sudden shift in the wind. So just keep those, keep their families in your thoughts and your prayers. Ron, thank you.
Thank you, Mitch. Jay Hall?
I guess on the agenda that we're talking about, the advertisement for professional engineering services, what that is in regards to is Tom and I have conducted an internal evaluation, and Kelly Arnold, internal evaluation of the treatment plant and the distribution system. Most of the items in this ad would be in reference to the water treatment plant, but the plant is 50 or 50-plus years old in some parts and 30-plus years old in another. We have some concerns about the settlement basin. We had a engineer, a structural engineering study completed, and that, the findings of that report also said that there are some structural issues that need to be answered. Nothing drastic, it's not the wall's not going to blow out or anything like that, but there are some structural issues that need to be addressed. So when we talked to a water board last month, the decision was to go ahead and advertise for compression, professional consulting engineers, and then that's what we're doing. We're accepting statements of qualifications for consulting engineering firms to provide engineering services necessary to make improvements to the city of Buchanan's water treatment plant and water distribution system. Some of the highlights of those will be upgrade to the water storage tank and booster stations monitoring systems, what's called normally SCADA or monitoring system, structural renovations to unit process facilities, i.e. the filter beds and the settlement basin, improvements to the flow monitoring processes, renovations to the piping gap, piping system, what's called a pipe gallery, which is in the filter beds. Some of the filter, filter bed gate valves are starting to, and butterfly valves are starting to show their age. We've actually had to replace part of one last year, and there's 30, some 36 or 37 valves in the piping gallery, all a minimum of 30 years old, and, and they're all starting to show signs of what we had to replace last year. So we're just trying to get in front of the, front of the card and, and stay in front of all these renovations and upgrades that need to be happening. And, you know, that's, that's where we are for the engineering, you know, that's a quick and dirty of what we're looking for from our consulting engineer. And again, we'll accept those statements of qualifications until July 4th, and they were notified due to some of my prior commitments with FEMA and another engagement, you know, that we won't be selecting anybody till at least August the 10th. You know, we'll have to schedule, conduct interviews, but it'll probably be a two and a half to three week period after the, the statements or qualifications are received before we make any decisions, because I've got some prior engagements that I cannot move.
Jerry, what, what's the life expectancy of these kind of facilities? What's.
Well, I mean, the settlement basin, it should have lasted a little longer, but, and I'm not saying that, because I wasn't there, but there was talk that the concrete wasn't properly consolidated, i.e. when it was placed, maybe some vibratory methods to make sure that it was, was segregated and leveled out. To see the process, you'll know what I'm talking about. But to vibrate the concrete, it ensures consistency throughout that specific pore. It makes sure that it's all the same moisture, that the concrete and the aggregate and the cement are setting, settling equally throughout the pore, you know, whether it's one, two days, three days, four days, one wall, two walls. And some of the rebar, we've noticed, is too close to the surface. Was it improperly tied? You're only supposed to drop concrete between 12 and 15 inches. Did they have a four-by-eight drywall foot section? The chute stops at four feet? There's no way to keep it from dropping that four feet? Well, there is, but did they follow the proper procedures? Because you're not supposed to drop concrete more than 12 to 15 inches because it separates the heavier items, they all settle to the bottom, knocking the rebar out or, and leaving just cement at the top. So you get concrete and stone at the bottom, you get cement in the middle, then you put your next concrete pore on top, and you get some rocks on the top and cement in them. And, you know, I can't say, but I mean, you should, you should see 50 to 70 years easily. And we had comments from, from Mr. Brown during that water, that, that he had witnessed it then, you know, but.
What are you saying, Mitch?
That he was concerned about the method that was being used to place the concrete, but, you know, you should, we should expect a little longer time out of the settlement basin than what we're seeing.
Jay, this methodology has not changed over 30 years, has it?
No, concrete's still.
Been the same, so.
When properly done, it, it lasts a long time. But I will say that we are forcing, I mean, it's, there's nothing wrong with the processes, there's nothing wrong with the quality of the water. We're only operating at 39% capacity. The, the plant works great. It's just showing an age on mainly one structure. Got some issues that we successfully addressed, we've successfully repaired the cracks on two of the four filter beds. I mean, one of the four filter beds, and I'd like to do another one next year, but other than that, it's just, this is the only abnormality, I guess, in the, in that. But we do need to have, we do, we do need to have a settlement basin. All right, so that's what's on the agenda. Just a brief project update on the four projects that are going on that are, that has most of my attention. The Army Reserve Center, quick and dirty, we're about 33% complete. We laid over 1,700 foot of line, but the last three weeks have really killed us as far as weather. I mean, two days on and then. I mean, two days on and then three days of rain just makes it very difficult to work, especially when it's one day sunny, one day rain, one day sunny. You can't, you have to wait for the site to dry out, so you've basically lost a week. So, we've been, it's been very slow the last three weeks, but we are making hot progress. We finally got through what's, you know, IAA, which is insurance auto auction, and we're through the fence there, which was the part that was really, we had to be concerned about because of security and IAA's requirements to maintain a secure facility. So, we're working through now the lower portion of the project, and as soon as it dries up, we hope to make some headway. Gateway East, it's funny that we're always talking about Gateway East. I know that Rich has sent Shippo. Shippo had three or four comments. Rich sent that information back to them, forwarded me, copied me on June 26th. I received it. Shippo said today that they have not received. And I said, I do not know how that's possible when I got it in the same email. But, she says if we make those four corrections, I'm sorry, if Shippo says if we make those four corrections, we should get our notice to proceed any day now. But, you know, we're still waiting everything and then, I know Jerry has got some other things, so he's kind of glad that it's not, we've not been given notice to proceed, but any day now. You know, I don't want to pinpoint a date, because I said July 1st, and lo and behold, Monday of last week, we received the comment. Rich replied back by Wednesday, and we still have not received notice.
What does Shippo stand for?
State Historical Preservation Office.
I think maybe it's ship house.
Michael alluded to the total project now being up $273,000 plus or minus $1,000. Sorry, $273,000 plus or minus. I had asked for and successfully received an additional monies, totaling approximately $57,000, which will bring our city's contribution to just under $59,000. And I thought that was nice, and how we waited two and a half, almost three years, when the original bid went out that they considered, you know, giving us the money. Route 20 lane widening. As I reported to in June, I received a letter from the DOH asking the city to locate as accurately as possible all water lines, sanitary sewer lines, and storm lines within a proposed project area, so that we could get that information to them. Water Department had theirs done by June 4th. We're still waiting for the storm sewer and the sanitary sewer locations, so that we can provide that map. The project manager has asked us, the city, to provide that map no later than this Friday, because their schedule is as such as follows. August 13, they want to conduct their preliminary field review and submit right away one and two plans, which is where they finalize what's going to happen, what's going to be the alignment, how much they're going to take. They need to contact the property owners of the respective pieces of property that are affected. Late September, conduct a final field review. Once they've taken that information and our information, they'll combine it, and they'll do that. October 2013, they'll submit right away three plans, which are their final plans. This is basically, here's where we are, this is going to be the project. Early 2014, early January 2014, conduct the final office review. April 2014, advertise the project. May 2014, after Strawberry Festival, let and award the contract. So, that's where we are, but it all hinges upon us submitting the information by this Friday.
Does anything hinge on Shippo on that one?
They've already conducted that, but they're going to take care of that with their internal office review.
And that's the bushes.
Yes, and that's where if, you know, they have been notified by us, as I mentioned to you all that we've contacted, the property owner contacted the mayor, he called me in, and they're all for removing them that had been passed on to them. They said, oh, well, that's good news. That'll help move the project along. So, you know, we'll support where we have to, but that'll be conducted in the preliminary field review and the final office review. Northridge Development. Northridge is out by Microtail, it's a little six or seven structure facility that's going on. The review of the water line, they've submitted water utility drawings for us, for Sam and I to review. Review of the water line is about 90% complete, and we've been asked to prepare a quote to make a couple taps to the 12-inch line there. And because there's an additional two and a half to three and a half feet of fill that goes in the area that they're working, before our water line is buried too much deeper, we want to make these connections now while it's high. When I say high, the water line's high. It's only five feet deep instead of eight and a half to nine feet deep, so that we're not going back in there and digging a big hole just to access these water line tap connection points. So, we're going to do that, hopefully within the next two weeks, once we approve, once we receive approval by the owner. The owner's one, has agreed to pay the costs associated with making these taps, but I know they want to continue to fill, but we've put them off just a little bit until we make our taps. Sam only received the sanitary sewer lines yesterday, so he's starting his review, and we're still waiting on the storm sewer, storm sewer design for the Northridge project to begin that review and, you know, ultimately approving it, so that they can come to Ridge and get building permits and all those requirements. The contractor has started and has slowed down his fill activities, waiting for us to get in and make our taps. But, as soon as we're done there, they expect to resume those. The NPDS permit was applied for and approved. All their sediment and erosion control plans are in major for these last two weeks. The ponds are working, the drainage ditches are working, and that's all I have.
Questions?
Questions? Thank you. Good report. Jerry?
If you need me, come to us.
Waste report reportedly short. We didn't have a meeting, so it didn't report. Consolidated Public Works Board met June 27th. We had a request from erosion, so we rented 109 Wood Street to open a alley. It's partly open now. The board denied that request at this time. Also, there was a request from the Quarters of Park to hold an outdoor quilt show. Riverwalk was approved, and a request to use the Farmer's Market at Chalbun Park for a flea market, that also was approved. Michael submitted a budget revision, which was approved, and also financial statements. And Jay submitted the request for the action plate that Consolidated River Street Water was all together to purchase. Teresa Summers, you may remember that her son's Boy Scout troop had applied for a tree grant, and the street department helped facilitate that grant, planted some trees in the park. She submitted the final report on that tree grant that was accepted, so that finalized that grant. And all the trees, we had Robert Barber do an assessment on the trees, and all the trees except for two, there was two that was shot sometimes of white, but he thought they would pull through, were so far doing well. I think there was a question, last council meeting about the, or a comment about the railroad crossings on North 20. And I have made contact with Brian Nichols, excuse my contact with the office down here, they know. And Brian was checking with his people. He said the good news was they had all of their tire work done. He remembered they were going to throw them a place on, so they would be back on crossings. He didn't know what the schedule for that one was. He was going to try to find out to get back with me, but he did not. I just talked to him yesterday, and he hasn't gotten back with me, so I'll have more to report on that as I get the information from them. I do know that last year, they did some blacktop work at that crossing.
It didn't last for...
No, no, it needs a whole new revamp like they did on this one. Again, when that information becomes available, I'll make you aware of that. That's all I have on that, Mayor, unless you have questions.
Questions about the Riverwalk. And I've talked to Rich and a couple of people, but I wanted to bring that to you, too, because I've been getting complaints about the growth of everything around the Riverwalk, and people are saying they're getting afraid to walk down there, because they're afraid critters are going to jump out at them or something.
We share... It's funny you bring that up.
Four-legged crew.
It's a delicate balance. Let me put it that way. We share the Riverwalk with West Virginia Wesleyan College. And I will note that the biology department uses those unmowed areas and requests that they not be mowed for use in the classes. Now, we do go in usually once a fall and clear those areas out, but a lot of those areas that are grown are on Wesleyan property as well. So, it's kind of a give and take, and I understand we try to mow back from the trail, or the walk trail, a couple mower swipes, but there is demand for those areas not to be mowed as well.
That's what I understood, but I just wanted to get that out to the general public, so don't quit calling me about this. But, it is not the city of Buchanan. It is, West Virginia Wesleyan College is property, and they are the ones that are doing that.
I will note that about the first season, only season, after I was appointed District Commissioner here in town, we really, really done a good job, don't I, Ron? Cleaned things up, and we got several comments of how well the riverbank looked and all the weeding that we got done and everything, and that was short-lived.
Yeah. I trimmed my rose bushes back once, too. The next item under my name, Mayor.
Jerry, just comment on Walk Trail there. I'm a frequent visitor over there, and sometimes at night, and there are a lot of limbs that are down in my head over top there.
Well, that's a crew, a long crew, taking their best, man.
They did just some trimming.
Fate just so happened.
What else you got here?
We want to talk about the playground equipment at the City Park.
Okay.
Solid Public Works Board, there's a couple pieces of equipment there at the City Park that, one, we had an accident claim against our insurance back last year, or the handrail or a piece of the handrail. Basically, fixed that handrail. However, they are blue structures, and they are very old. I'll say that. They are marginal at best as far as safe structures, and Consolidated Public Works Board, the club, and elected that we need to remove those structures. We have since cordon them off, fenced them off, and put keynotes signs on them. However, wanted to bring that to council's attention.
Well, I'll make a comment, because I know that we had requested, which I guess Consolidated Board can't do that, we can make a recommendation to the city council to remove the playground specifically in question. But, I think, I think the largest issue we have, and maybe David can comment on this, is that my understanding is that with playground equipment, there are certified agencies out there, David, or something, that determines whether or not you have the proper safety for children to play on, you know, rules and regulations or what have you.
Uniform standards, yes.
And I think that we have an issue with our playground equipment at our different parks, that some of it's marginal at best, and we need to, I think if it's marginal, we ought to take it down, because I think it's a potential safety hazard for our children that are playing there.
Let me, let me ask Jay to weigh in on this.
Okay.
Because Jay was at the Consolidated...
Well, Jay was at the meeting, and you...
And Jay was, you know, he worked with school system for a while, and he understands playground.
Right, and that was, that was a big point, because, you know, you had to be approved by NPSI, which is the National Playground Safety Inspection. You know, the companies, this is more of a liability standpoint, and the reason this playground equipment costs so much is because it carries that stamp. And what's that means is it has to be installed by a certified, you know, they go through rigorous national requirements to be able to have that NPSI stamp on it. They have to be there in your presence, even if you're volunteering the labor and equipment. If their person is not on site, that playground equipment will not receive that certificate that it was put in, you know, in compliance. You have to have that. There were two schools that put up playground equipment that, you know, and you don't get a lot for 5,000 square feet. I mean, 5,000 squares feet was anywhere between $60,000 and $80,000, you know, for a singular piece of, a single piece...
I've heard any more about the line that was signed to the City Park. I was going to say that last week. Now, the learning trail, the river trail, at one point, Pat Long was the...
Who takes care of that little park down, down at the end of Ford Street down there?
Which, the city takes care of that. But Rotary actually has committed funds.
Yeah, it's Rotary required...
Do some extra, extra work down there right now.
Trying to remember, is there any playground equipment in that park?
Yeah, it is.
And are we responsible for that, too?
Yep, we are. It's on City Park.
So, that's another, that's a fourth park?
That's third playground.
Third playground?
Well, we do have a fourth. We count Stocker, which is...
Yeah, Stocker's fourth. On the idea of parks and recreation and everything, too, I think perhaps we should start thinking maybe in the way of what Lewis County did over there with their, with their water park. Get something going, present it, and try to ask for levy for a specific thing for our kids to do, because we don't have anything to keep these kids out of trouble. Our youth, they say, is the future of our country, and if it's like the youth I see hanging around on the street corners down here, our country's in one heck of a mess.
I'll tell you, Ron, I got, we got some awful good kids in this community, too.
We do have some good kids in this, this community, and I see them every Sunday, too. But, I'm talking about the ones that are down here, they're just causing trouble. They're yelling at people, they're yelling, "Dave, at his place up there," and cussing people out. I've got kids across the street from me now that are walking up and down the street all the time, that continually drop the F-bomb, and everybody's going up the street. I don't like it, and I think we should be in the business of doing something for our kids to do. A water park could be fine, something, you know, a club where they can go to, or if we had a project we could put out there like this playground equipment, then perhaps the people would vote for it if they knew what they were going to get for it.
Well, and if you, if you put out a half million dollar levy...
Half million dollars, not...
But, a half million dollars and do it, and do a right kind of a job of doing a park and putting a playground in and saying, here's, okay, we ask you to give us the money to do this, we did it, it's good, it's fine, now let's address something else.
But, you know, the age, the age segment that we're talking about, that you're specifically talking about, Ron, I don't care what kind of money you put in a water park, or parks, or whatever playground, the cultural societal changes we're facing with the internet and stuff out there as far as sensationalism and violence and celebrities, we're not going to, we're not going to have much impact on a lot of these kids. I mean, we just got a real problem with our society today. You know, it's frustrating.
The whole thing is frustrating.
Yeah, but I don't know how...
There's no place for family entertainment here to do anything.
I don't know how you, and a lot of them don't want to do it. They want to stay in the...
Jerry, you tired of standing there?
I am.
We through it, Jerry.
Jerry, this isn't your problem, is it?
It's all, it's all of our problem.
It is our problem, and...
Well, we're going to kick this thing around, but Rich, somebody, what you got?
I don't have, I already covered most of one they talked about, which is the police department interview scheduling. Will, go ahead, while I get the floor for a second, go on down to the correspondence item. You'll find in your packets a letter I sent to the FOP Lodge requesting their presence at some near-term meeting. Have not heard back from them, but I also contacted the Secretary of State's office, and right after a copy of that letter, you'll find some information that I took off their website. It's on the left-hand side of the front back. The Secretary of State's business records for charitable organizations, and short of this, if you go down near the bottom of the page, you'll see dispersments, or administrative dispersments were about $4,000, or a little over 10% of the funds, fundraising dispersments... Short of this, if you get down near the bottom of the page, you'll see dispersments for administrative dispersments were about $4,000 or a little over 10% of the funds. Fundraising dispersments were 25,000 or about 68% of the funds and the actual dispersments for the program were about 7,800 or 21%. And we'll tell you, although that's in my opinion, not the best record in the world of collecting money. They actually employ, which is on the top of the next page, they actually employ an out-of-state fundraising firm that apparently does the actual calling and communications. But you're certainly welcome and anybody that's interested, the Secretary of State's office has a separate section of charitable organizations and you can look up for these. Basically what you get is three, three percentages. The portion that's used for administration, the portion that's used to pay for the fund, cost of fundraising, and the portion that's actually dispersed for the direct organizations. And after I went through a bunch of, just looking at, see what was out there, I must say I found one that 0% went to the organization and 100% went to the administration. I also found several where 0% went for administration and fundraising and 100% of it was given to the actual cause that they were raising money for. So you'll, you'll look over the gamut, but at least there is information on the Secretary of, West Virginia Secretary of State's site that you might be interested in. So I'm a little disappointed in their numbers, but perhaps they can explain that.
And I, I don't want to focus on the FOP, but I think anybody that gets telemarketers asking for money have to be very concerned that the money that they give oftentimes is not really going to the people that they think it's going to go to. And, you know, I just think, again, it's a cultural and societal issue we got today in our country unfortunately.
Any questions for Rich?
Yeah. The police candidates that we have are all of them within the county?
Are all the current candidates for the police position? I'd have to look at their application to be sure, but I would say no.
Because about the residency requirement, do they know about that?
They have been told. We haven't given them a copy of the ordinance, but we can do that. Of course, it's going to be an item that's in the future and all depends on when that's, and if it's passed and also what their higher date is and so on.
Well, you know, what we did in the past where one lived out of the county, I just didn't want to get in that situation again.
Well, I don't think the county, David, correct me if I'm wrong, but the county in the issue here is the distance from Buchanan.
Oh, it isn't? Oh, it isn't? So I think that.
You could in fact be, live outside the county, but still within the radius that's being discussed.
But the query to the five candidates, would it be your intention to comply with this ordinance even though it may technically not be in effect until after you start here? Would be a legitimate question posed to your candidates. Absolutely. Nothing illegal about that one.
That's why I wanted to know.
Anything else for Rich? Dave?
Thanks, Mayor. Whole bunch of quick things. We'll get into ordinance 376 on the first reading here and just that you have a couple of things in your packet tonight pertinent to the army, armory.
Readiness.
Recordation, yes. Documents were recorded. And I thought I was completely done with my part of the Armory Project. There's actually a final title letter. The information that's in that letter needs to be put on the U.S. Department of Agriculture form and sent to Paula Muller, but that's, the money's, Mr. Dawson's already spending it and we're in good shape with that. The hisson dismissal order was entered yesterday by the federal district court judge. That matter now is a matter of record, has been stripped in from the federal court docket. Still coming along with the electrical ordinance. I came down here at 1:00 for a 15-minute thing and I got home at 10:00 after 5:00. So it was like no time to finish typing, but it's, it's almost finished. For a draft consideration. The junk storage ordinance, ordinance 375 goes into effect on July 19th. So another heads up to those folks who might think that their yards and porches aren't in compliance and we continue to give them advanced notice of that ordinance's effectuation. Working with Mitch Tacey on some thoughts relative to this addressing information from the county commission. One of the things that bothers me about this situation that we haven't talked about before, some of the vehicles that we have in our public safety complex are county vehicles. The county commission actually pays a portion of the liability insurance for the trucks. I believe they contribute to the workers comp, part of the volunteer benefits. The Buchanan Fire Department, the volunteer fire department is a separate incorporated entity from the city. So that might avail us of some rational approach with them to, in other words, the Buchanan Volunteer Fire Department is really as much or more a county entity as it is a city entity. So we're going to, we're going to try to skin the cat that way. Jay Holland didn't think I had enough work going on, so he gave me a complex right-of-way matter today to work on in my spare time. So more to follow about that one. And just a couple of reminders about other things. A neighbor asked, with all the ordinances that the city council is doing, why don't they have a barking dog ordinance? And I said, March 2001, ordinance 300, Article 12, we do have a barking dog ordinance. And if you have a problem, you should contact city hall and they'll tell you what you need to do as far as starting the complaint process. There are fines ranging from 25 to $500 for folks who let their dogs bark incessantly. So we already got that ordinance covered. Interesting news bites in the last two days. Yesterday, West Virginia University announced the entire smoking ban across campus. Students engaged in that conduct will be expelled. Employees who engage in that conduct will be terminated. And Marshall followed up, they're always behind WVU. They did the same thing today. Marshall's, now campus is now completely smoke-free too.
Wesleyan is considering.
Yeah, Wesleyan, there have been discussions at the college and Mr. Walz, I think, is on the committee that's considering it. And the last thing I would mention is just sort of a public service reminder, yesterday was the first day of the non-hands-free driving stuff. You can no longer text or talk on your cell phone and those are primary offenses. You can actually be pulled over if you are seen doing that. It's not part of, you're doing it while you get pulled over, something like having a tail lined up. They are separate primary offenses. That's all I have unless you all have questions for me and we have some other things coming for you next time.
Anything else? Okay. Got, well, you did D1 and Rich did D2. So the consent agenda is approval of minutes for regular meetings June 18th, building and wiring permits, paying for the bills, entertainment matters, approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
In a second. All in favor, signify seven, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Those know, the ayes have it. Dave, back to you.
Mayor, this is the first reading. We discussed it a couple of meetings ago and then the last time you had this draft ordinance to review, but this would actually be the first of two readings. This is ordinance number 376 of the city of Buchanan and ordinance requiring all public safety personnel, that is police officers and firefighters hired by the city of Buchanan following the effectuation date of this ordinance to reside within 10 linear miles of the city of Buchanan's public safety complex. Grandfathering in certain situations, current public safety personnel, grandfathering certain current public safety personnel from application of this ordinance and three, providing for a grace period for relocation of all newly hired public safety personnel to comply with the provisions hereof. I heard the advanced notices tonight on channel 12 that Buchanan was invoking a 10 road mile ordinance. This is 10 linear miles and the only reason we use that adjective is because that term aerial miles is a military term that is actually more than 10 times 5,280. Linear means 10 times 5,280 feet. And the epicenter, we start with the public safety complex and draw the 10 miles out around that way.
And that could be 20 road miles.
It could be. And I'm told by both Chiefs Gregory and Tacey that all of our current folks, as a practical matter, are okay anyway. So we're good to go with that. It's my recommendation that you approve this on the first of two readings this evening.
Motion to approve ordinance number 376, city of Buchanan, first reading. Motion made, Jerry, second?
Second.
And second. Discussion, all in favor, signify seven, say aye.
Aye.
Those know. The ayes have it. Brings us to comments and announcements, Ron.
Well, I had somebody ask me how come we did so many ordinances? I said, because we have an ordinance that requires this too. Be safe out there this week and enjoy the Fourth of July holidays. Be safe on the roads, be careful with your fireworks if you got them. Don't get called out by Chief Tacey to put out some fires or anything like that. And please keep your prayers, the 19 firemen in Arizona that were killed, it was a terrible thing to happen and I pray for their families and that's all I've got to say.
David?
When we have our work session next Monday at 4:00 PM, could we indicate that it's not specifically to talk about the public safety and the potential payment of early indebtedness retirement? I mean, I think it's a work session and there's probably some other topics we need to discuss as well.
Well, I think it's a work session that's, we're going to, I think we need to concentrate on what Michael's work is today because he's got to have something ready for us to approve by the 18th. So it's, it's going to be more about finances. If we get, if we get that taken care of and we still got some time, we can pick up some other stuff, but we don't, but we're not going to, we're not going to violate.
No, that's what I'm suggesting.
Governmental proceedings.
But I mean, this is going to be open to the public.
Yes.
So, yeah. That's all, that's the only comments I have. Everybody have a nice Fourth of July, be careful.
Man?
Just want to wish everybody a happy and safe Fourth of July.
Rich?
A couple of things happened today that bothered me, bothered me for a long time, but they were reinforced today. And as I was coming back to city hall coming down Florida Street after lunch, there was a car that came out of the end of Madison Street going at a reasonably high rate of speed for a residential neighborhood. And there's a stop sign at that corner, it's right beside the fire department's public safety complex. They did not even think about stopping. Went straight through that intersection. The only reason they had to stop because I was in that intersection. But it was close and I mean, they had absolutely no intention. You could tell by the way the shock on their face, not to mention my face, when I saw this white car just, you know, stopping inches away from the side of my car. It bothers me on these stop signs. We had another incident this afternoon. We monitored it. There was an individual who happens to be blind with a service dog that was trying to cross the intersection here at city hall twice. And we noted in one case that that individual is obviously not aware of where cars are or whether they're moving or not moving. They have to do it by sound. Five cars went through without even so much as stopping long enough to let that pedestrian go through the crosswalk, which is, they have the right of way, period. If you're crossing between blocks, I'll refer that to somebody else, but if you're at a crosswalk, the pedestrian has the right of way. And I don't care whether somebody's in the intersection or not. Stop sign means stop. Doesn't mean slow down. It doesn't mean try to run the stop sign if nobody else is in the intersection. It means stop. And, you know, heaven forbid it's somebody who can't see or a young child who runs after something or just not paying attention. But this whole concept of distracted driving, you know, I think it's, I'm glad to see the cell phone thing. I also just learned that the requirement for seat belts is just becoming a primary offense as of, I think, July 9th next week. But folks, we've got to slow down and pay attention to the signs and think about your neighbor or some kid that just could be in the way. Please think about those things. Happy Fourth of July.
I don't, I don't think, Rich, you making any comments about this or me or Ron, I don't think it has any material impact at all. The, you know, I sit out on my patio in Hart in Smithfield, it's probably 20 to 30 cars a day go right through that stop sign and the rate of speed. What, what is a speed limit in our city?
25.
Maybe we should make it 10. I mean, there's nobody that pays attention to probably the 25 mile per speed limit.
Making it 10 wouldn't help.
I think we should put speed, I mean, I, there's, I mean, it's ridiculous. Jerry wouldn't like that during a weather.
Well, the humps, not the bumps. Still don't like.
Well, I just, I could, I like seeing better use of our little monitoring station. I haven't seen it on a city street in a long time.
I had a request this week, citizens wanted that radar thing put up on the streets again. I don't know what the status of it is either.
Well, I had to ask for it a while back and it was put up down East Main, but evidently it's not working.
Well, it has repair issues like anything else physically.
On your issue here with the running the stop sign, Rich, up here on Main Street this, this, just this week, I was crossing the street and, and two cars came through. The first one barely slowed down through the stop sign and the second one just followed right on through. And I managed to step out and wave the second one down and, and ask the lady, ma'am, did you know that's a four-way stop? And she said, no, I didn't. I said, did you see the flashing lights? Did you, did you see the signs up there? She said, no, I just followed that car in front of me. So there you go. As Jim Smith, I followed the lady as she almost got me in the intersection till I was trounced and, and, you know, confronted her. I was like, do you realize that you almost hit me? That was last week.
Well, we need to start issuing tickets.
Well, we need to get some, yeah. Well, I also want to wish everybody a happy Fourth of July and if there's nothing else to claim our attention, we'll adjourn to meeting.